Upon the motion of Casey Raboy, seconded by Catherine Harper, by a vote of five to zero, up to seven temporary and intern teachers to be released no later than the end of the 23-24 school year.
Thank you.
And now we have our presentation from Greer.
Thank you. We have our music teacher, Jessica Hill, and we have Greer, I believe, fifth grade students. Is that right, Ms. Hill? All right, choir students. Thank you. Awesome job. That's a great way to start our meeting. We all need a little more happy in our life. Thank you so much, students. Thank you, Ms. Hill, for bringing fifth grade choir students out, and thank you, parents, for bringing your children, your students, and love the, we had a big fan in the audience, very cute there. All right, I will go ahead and start by reading our board meeting protocol. Our meeting is being recorded, it's open to the public, and it's live through Zoom teleconference. For public comment, public comments are three minutes per agenda item, and the board shall limit the total time for public comment for each agenda item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the board president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comment. To make comment in person, there's public comment cards over there by both entrances, and please hand that to Ms. Bach, our meeting assistant tonight. Email public comments or email to the superintendent 24 hours before the board meeting, and they're posted to the website. We did receive quite a few email public comments for items on the agenda tonight, but they were not received within the 24-hour time period, and so we did let people know that and invited them to come to our meeting to speak in person tonight. Board vote connectivity. Each motion will be followed by a roll call vote for action items. Should a board member attend remotely lose connectivity, we will pause the meeting for five minutes. Regular meetings will be adjourned by 10:30 p.m.
Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Arianna Aguilera. I'm the music teacher at McCaffrey Middle School, and I'm just here to do my annual invite to you to the GALT Music Showcase. We're going to have all of the elementary and the middle school music programs involved. On March 13th, we're holding it at Greer. And the band concert will start at 4:30, and then we have a handball group from Greer who's performing at 5:30, and the choir concert will start at 6:00. So we would love to see the board members and the general public also come to the performance because, again, it's going to be all of the bands and all of the choirs from all of our schools in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we have a letter from Sacramento County Office of Education, our county office, regarding the first interim budget. The board did approve that budget in December. So this is just a certification that it was approved by the county. I did want to note that, they noted that at this time, we had not settled with negotiations for salary with either union group. Of course, we have settled, and the board has approved for GEFA. We do have a tentative agreement with CSEA Classified. That still needs to be ratified by the union, and then that will be brought to the board if it is ratified in March. So just wanted to highlight that. Yeah, we'll start. Alejandra Gariby will start with the governor's proposal for this 24-25 state budget.
Okay, so last month, our cabinet and our board attended January's proposed budget for the governor for 24-25 school year. This is something we do in January. What we'd like to do now is, after the meeting, present to you guys what was presented to us and summarize to our board and our community of what the projections look for the upcoming fiscal year, even what it looks like for the effects of this school year. And we'll continue, and I'll show you through the slides and explain what's going on. So the governor's budget theme, so Newsom's measured a $37.9 billion budget shortfall due to largely the 2022. The tax collections were below the budget assumptions. The governor budget proposal projects the education budget against local impact of nearly the $12 billion reduction in Proposition 98. So in, in what it looks like is the taxes have dropped dramatically, and the current budget, he, Governor Newsom is, in order to fund Prop 98, in order for us to get our regular funding, he's going to have to dip into some reserves. And even though that he was being less specific on the revenue assumptions than the LAO, we'd have had news from the LAO, and I'll explain what that looks like in a few slides and the effects overall. So, good news, and again, that has changed after today's article that I read. The historic increase in Prop 98 resulted in significant financial investment to combat the pandemic. The state is better prepared to weather financial downturn, but due to that $26 billion shortfall in tax revenues, and, and what it appears that the state provided money above the minimum guarantee. So you notice last year we have a large COLA, and we got a raise. So they gave us money they didn't have. So they have to fund it with one-time funds, and now the governor's saying, okay, well, I don't have the money, and now he has to readjust his budget. The governor's solution to mitigate this shortfall is unprecedented and not widely clear understood. I know the LAO is Legislative Office Analysts, where Department of Finance, where they project and what it looks like. They do have some recommendations of what the governor could do, and as I mentioned, today, there was some news that they're recommending no COLA for next year, and even reductions in current budgets for this year. So some of the grants that we are receiving in some of the one-time money, they, they could possibly reduce that because the governor has to make a decision how he's going to make up the shortfall that came in. There was a $7.7 billion shortfall that was announced today. So it continues to get worse, it seems like.
It was $78 billion, right?
Yes.
So now it's $78 billion deficit. So it's drastically different from just last month.
So in the governor's budget in January, he wasn't proposing cuts at that time. This is January. And there is no deferrals, and general fund revenue spiked in 21-22, and that's when he used that one time. So the bad news is that COLA-only year of statutory COLA is significantly less. So it was .76 in January, what was presented. Again, that can change to nothing. It's one of the options to help mitigate this big drop in revenue for the state. So the big three taxes, so the governor's budget versus the LA's outlook. So we get money from personal income tax, corporation tax, and sales use tax. And we saw the big drop in personal income tax in February currently. And in personal income tax, there's a $9.1 billion and a $1.8 billion higher in 23-24 than 24-25. Corporation's taxes are slightly a little higher, but again, February showed a big drop in that projections, and it's not, it's looking like we're getting less revenue for next year. Here's a historical statutory COLA, there's our cost of living. For the 24-25, you'll notice that last year was an 8.22. It's just dropping the history. You can see from 1983 all the way to the projections for 24-25. It just, it had a high, but you could see the red line on there. So what's not in, in the education budget? So despite the significant drop in the minimum guarantee, the governor's budget proposes no cuts in overall Proposition 98 as of January. There isn't deferrals. I know several years ago, many districts went through deferral periods, meaning, hey, we're not going to give you your money yet. We'll give it to you when we get it. So the district will have to figure out how to pay our overall monthly expenditures. So they're saying that's not going to happen this time, so far. Sweeps, the sweeps is basically take allocated funds from programs and say, we can't fund this program no longer. I'm sorry, unfortunately, we don't have the money. That is one of the proposals the Department of, our LAO office is proposing as an option to outweigh some of the drop in revenue, and we'll see more information in the May revise of what that looks like. So the fluctuation in statutory COLA from the Department of Finance. So we have our Legislative Office of Analysts. We have the State Office, and then we have the Department of Finance. So if they all work together, get to build this budget. So the changing in statutory COLA is not related into the state's financial health, rather, it's computed based on aggregated metrics. So here's a picture in the bottom graph of what was projected originally for 24-25 school year at 3.94 COLA. And, and you see the decrease of 3.18, showing that projection of .76, and then you start seeing that decrease over the years. We knew that was happening because he provided a COLA that he didn't have the funds for at that time, and he used that one-time money to fund that COLA. So it was going to eventually, they have to balance their budget. So what does it mean for us? I know this is a lot of information, and it's fun for me, though. I like, I like to learn this. So what does it look like for the district? So in first interim, what I used to present in my projections for what revenue the district's going to receive is a 2% COLA. I didn't go with a 3.94 because I was reading, researching, and the county was letting us know, and it didn't seem realistic because we're not going to get that 3.94. So my projections, when I presented in December, is a 2% COLA. You could see that the per-funding ADA was about 12,000. The projected funded ADA is about 3,116. It's giving us a revenue of $39.7 million. Keep in mind, the funded ADA is not our actual ADA, and I'll explain on the third, on the third box there. So after January, once we got our January's budget, you notice that $12,000 went down, and the projected funded ADA is the same because they fund us based on a three-year average or best of two years. And then you notice that my revenue went down about 500,000. So I don't have, originally, I had those 500,000, and this is for what I projected for the next year. Now I've lost 500,000. I need to cut 500,000 now. They're telling me we're not going to have that money anymore. But as we continue, since I mentioned we are funded based on the average of three years or best of the, like, if it's current or last year, once we hit that three-year mark, your average starts balancing now. So on the third box, our funded per ADA is 12,000, but our actual ADA, based on how we're funded, is 3,078. That's 38.7 million. That's a million-dollar drop. Once we get to that third year out, I have a million dollars less that we need to project. In order for us to be fiscally solvent, I need to, I don't have that money. So we have to right-size our budget in order to keep up with what the governor's giving us. So it's, it's the money they give us, and this is the money we're able to pay salaries, our supplies, our operations, and you'll notice that drop in my projections, especially for second interim. You'll notice that my third year looks like a drop of a million dollars more. 500,000 plus another million dollars. So that's when we still have, we have to, we have to plan together. And I have to give the county a list of how is the district going to maintain fiscally solvent with all the reduction in revenue from the state. Here's our school services. Financial DART board is where we have a summary of what our projections look like up to 27-28. We do multi-year projections for three years, and it gives you what we use for our projections and what we present to you guys during our interim periods. We use our California CPI, which is Consumer Price Indic, our projections of what the price of goods are going to cost, which, because we all pay more for items at stores, but the district as well, when we buy our supplies and operations as well. Another thing that I want to note is our CALPERS is going up. So we do have to maintain that increase, even though they're projecting a .76 in COLA. The CALPERS increases outweigh that cost. So the district needs to, we're not, we don't have enough COLA to maintain the price of goods or maintain the CALPERS requirement we're trying to meet. So those are other items to keep in mind. Other funding areas are lottery mandated block rounds. You can see the prices for students, how we get that. It's what we use for our projections. Minimum wage, minimum wage is increased for $16 in January 1st, our current, due to our current TA. We are, we are fine. We don't have to rechange our salary schedules for some of our minimum wage employees. It is going to be something we'll have to revisit around January 1st, 2026, so in seven, in a few years. Because even after a project, I'm just estimating about that increase, about 1680-something. So if we have to meet that 1690, we'll have to review that salary schedule because we do have employees that are at that minimum wage pay amount. So certificate classified layoffs. So as I start building the budget and I start making projections, I presented to you guys during December and then next month in our, our second interim. It's a period of the district has to follow certain procedures. So in January, we get the budget, as I presented right now, summary of it. And then around late February, we have board resolutions to reduce certificate and classified service, and then by March 15, the layoff notices. May, we also get in May, our May revise, which is the, what the governor presented in January, a finalized summary of his revision. And that's what I use to finalize my budget for next year, and I start building it around April, May. And, and in June, I present it to the board of what that looks like, and by July, it gets enacted. There could be changes where the governor pushes out his budget, and we'll have an update in July for, in that period. But this is our normal deadlines by the education code that we have to follow. So the road ahead. So despite a multimillion deficit budget, the governor is calling for limited early action on issues, areas that are not affecting education. The next steps in the process is controlled by the legislator, which has the responsibility to vet governor's proposal during the budget hearings over the next several months. So we started seeing that happening now in February, and that's how we started noticing that there's a drop of revenue more than what he projected for January. I will, as I get more information, by second interim, which is next month's board meeting, I'll present what's, what it looks like. I'm very transparent. I try to provide everything up to date to our board community. So in our next board meeting, you'll have an updated of our, what the budget is looking like for our next, for our multi-year projection.
Questions?
Thank you, Alejandra. And again, I just wanted to restate that although this is, this was just given to us last month, there's already significant changes that we're seeing. We were told by the experts in the field that there's, they're anticipating so many changes with the May revise that they're not even working on trailer bill language right now. Typically, after the budget is announced in January, they start working on the language, but they're anticipating so much to change that they're not spending the time on the bill language right now.
Oh, yeah, sorry. So I just had a couple of observations and then a question as well. So I agree, I think there's very credible sources that are saying exactly what you're saying, that the the deficit is potentially going to be much larger than the governor's proposals, and, and the latest is the 70 billion. I do also want to mention that there's also laws that have gone into effect the beginning of this year that could even, I've, in my opinion, potentially exacerbate that number because there's potentially going to be a demographic change where more people are relying on social services, and that could potentially increase costs. So, and there's no real shut-off to that right now. So, so I just kind of wanted to put that out there as far as like a trend, just to be aware. And then the question I had was, so recently, there was like a $2 billion settlement, the governor, I think originally, and correct me if I'm wrong, if my understanding is incorrect, was going to sweep emergency block grant funds potentially, and then there was a $2 billion settlement related to COVID learning loss, and so as part of that settlement, had agreed to keep that $2 billion in. So I'm not sure how that affects our budget, if it does, if it's just we are sort of where we were at before, but then, of course, what that is going to do is sort of kick the can down the road, and then they'll have to potentially backfill that gap eventually, and then potentially that could impact us as well. So I was just sort of looking down and seeing, you know, what potentially could happen, but the one question was the $2 billion, because I think there were some accountability factors also built into that settlement.
Correct. Yeah, there is, it could affect us, and what it looks like now is a lot of these restricted one-time monies are, are getting reviewed as an option to, okay, how much are we really going to reduce from them? And we have, we still have learning loss funds. We haven't received all of it at this point, but they could still take money back. It's, it's unused, since we do reporting on a quarterly basis, they say, well, you haven't used this money yet, and since we're on a, we need the money, I, we need it back. It could potentially happen. And we, we keep you guys posted in our interim periods of what's going on, and it's not as, as positive as he put it in January, and now that we're getting more news and it's coming out, and we just want to be transparent with everybody that this is news coming from where we're funded and how we're funded. We, we don't control that. They give us the money, and then we use it to budget, to create our budget, and to be able to provide the services we count for our students. So it, it's, it's, it's ongoing, and we'll keep you guys posted as much as possible, and we're, we'll see what that comes in May for our May revise.
Yeah, just to put, I mean, for everyone to kind of understand is, the original budget was based on projections that were very optimistic, and the actuals are not materializing in that fashion, which is where we get to the 70 billion. Thank you for, thank you.
Yeah, they're saying that he's considering reductions to expanded learning funds, transitional kinder, food nutrition program, transportation. A lot of the areas that we have been told we're going to keep receiving ongoing funding, but he's, he's going to have to balance his budget some way, and so there's, there's going to be reductions. Oh, go ahead, come on in. Sure. The, you can tell it's very warm in here, and so we've asked city staff if they could help us, so that's what we're doing here, trying to cool it down.
Thank you so much. We tried that, but I don't know. It goes back to seventy.
Go ahead, you can just keep, we'll just act like you're not there. Yeah, so I just wanted to make an announcement that it is that time of year where we are surveying our parents, students, and staff. Our students are in fifth to eighth grade that we're asking to take the survey. We did another all-call to parents this afternoon. It'll, the survey window will be open until next week, and so so far, the results look, or not the results, but we have no idea about the results, but we can see how many people have taken the survey. And we're pretty low right now on parents, and so we'll keep pushing that out there, but please, parents, take the survey. This is a sample letter of what the parent letter looks like. The links can be found either on your school website, on the district website. I know our principals are also pushing information out to parents, but really, really need feedback from parents on, on how you feel about the climate, safety, relationship building. Just, we really value the feedback and use it in all of our plans. So please, please help us, give us that feedback. Okay, so this is a report item based on public comment we received last month at our board meeting. I've included the regulation and exhibit for facilities inspection. I've included the regulation and exhibit for facilities inspection. And we have highlighted for the board the sections that pertain to stocking menstrual products in our bathrooms. The concern that was brought up at our last meeting was the fact that we are stocking products in a boys' bathroom. And so currently, all boys' bathrooms, I'm sorry, not all, one boys' bathroom in each of our sites does have a product dispenser in the boys' bathroom in the multipurpose room. And that was put in there a couple of years ago, following this facilities inspection. And so we have been trying to do an analysis of the language. And it has been brought up that the language does say men's, one men's restroom. So I wanted to bring this up again to the board. It was recommended that we have a discussion. And so I opened this up for a discussion.
For the information, I mean, I think when I hear and read the men's restroom, so I think I feel like it should be in the office where the men's restroom is. Definitely, I know the health office should always, you know, have access as well. And I think that's something that is easily.
Yes, we've, yes, we've ordered, they're already in the girls and all at McCaffrey and the intermediate. And then one other school, we put it in the primary, just the way the school is set up. But we have ordered also for all of the health office bathrooms.
Then I know like Marengo has the single stall bathroom.
Yes.
When they did the remodel. And so that will have it as well.
Yes, that one already does.
And then it would be nice moving forward. However, obviously, our budget probably doesn't look great to put a single stall at every school site. Wouldn't be ideal. It's just finding the money and navigating that process. I mean, that's, does anyone else have any?
Aren't we required eventually to put in a single stall bathroom in each campus?
We are, I believe it's by twenty-five, twenty-six, gender neutral stall. And our facility master plan that we're going through right now, they are identifying locations that that could happen on campus. We only have it at Marengo right now, but we do have to prioritize that.
So looking at the ed code, it's short, it's brief, and it's impossible to, you know, project possible meanings. But I, my recommendation would be to follow it to the letter as it is written. And it does say men's restroom. So until things change, if they do change, this is our mandate.
And I just, I had some thoughts as well. So I can certainly appreciate the challenges and the struggles of looking at this law and trying to see what is it? And how do we implement it? And what the school and administrators have done to try and to do this along with, in partnership with you, I'm sure. But to kind of give an analogy, it's as if there was a law that was made that said the sky must always be purple. And so everyone is going around trying to make sure that the sky is always purple, knowing the sky cannot always be purple, but how do we make it? And so it's not, it's not the, it's really the premise that is causing the issue and the farcicality thereof that I think is really why we're sort of having these struggling conversations. So I do like the fact that it does say men's restroom. And if we, you know, say men's restroom, it's my understanding that a memic came in at the Higher Education Committee, which does deal with adults. And so I'm supportive of that. I also, just personally, and this is just my opinion, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board. I do think that a lot of these potential changes, we sort of need to look at, you know, on a bigger picture. And what does this mean from all of our other policies that we have in place and how do they interact? So, you know, I really appreciate the gentleman's analogy last month of if you give a mouse a cookie, I'm not even sure if I said that right. But I do think that there's a lot more thought that needs to be put into these. But I do agree that, you know, looking at the option of just putting in a men's restroom and then, of course, the all-gender restroom, once that comes into play, seems to make, seems to be clear. Because you also don't want to go beyond the law, because then you're, you're in a, you know, another situation. So I would just say that I think that's a really good potential option. So, thank you.
My personal opinion is, I honestly, I couldn't care less if there's a tampon machine in the boys' restroom. But according to our ed code, it says, I think we need to follow this ed code and where it says in amends. That's more appropriate to be in amends than to be with the little kids.
All right. Can definitely do that. That's true. Do we have public comment on this?
Not on.
Oh, no, no, we do not. No, okay, all right, okay.
We do have others, but not on this.
Okay, not, okay, thank you.
Bring us to other reports.
We have City of Galt development updates, and we have Craig Hoffman, Community Development Department Director. Thank you, Craig. Yeah.
At the fancy seat. Hi, how are you? My name's Craig. I'm the Community Development Director for Galt. And I think over the last year, we started exchanging information at our CAS meetings. You know, what's going on with the city, what's going on with the school district? And I think we need to do a better job sharing numbers because what we were seeing from a development standpoint, every year, we're trying to put together our budgets. And unless you know what you're doing, sometimes up to five years in advance, how do you budget for what type of services you need to provide for? And so we've been trying to do a lot better job looking at what numbers we have coming up. Next slide, that's great. One of the questions and comments that we always get, we don't want Galt to look like Elk Grove, we don't want Galt to look like Lodi. It's not, it's going to look like Galt. Our current boundary, and it's a very big boundary, it was set up back in two thousand nine. The current boundary for this community would provide for a population of up to fifty-one thousand people. It's going to take a long time to get there. The existing general plan boundary was expected that it'd exceed a twenty-year horizon. Most likely, it's a twenty-fifty boundary. My guess would be it's a boundary that probably goes out to about twenty-seventy. Next slide, if I could. This last January, every year in May, on May first, we get our new population. It comes from the Department of Finance. And although we've been building houses, the number keeps on sliding back. And the reason why this community used to have a average house occupancy of about three point two four, and now it's down to three point one two. That doesn't sound a lot, but when you put that over like ten thousand houses, all of a sudden, you start losing a thousand people within the community. So it's a big change. Right now, we have about thirty-one hundred residential lots within the community that we could build about ninety-seven multifamily units. In our current boundary, if you looked at what the city limits would support, would support about a population of thirty-nine thousand residents. So how do you get to from twenty-five thousand population? If over the next twenty years, you built two hundred homes a year, you could get to thirty-nine thousand residents. So next slide. And so do we build two hundred homes a year? No, we don't. When we really started looking at some of these numbers, and I know they're tough to look at on the screen, but over the last fifteen years, we built about nine hundred twenty-two homes, and that's about fifty-seven per year. When I was in college, somebody always said, well, how many houses do you want to build per year? And the comment was always somewhere between about one point five to two percent growth rate. And the question was like, what does that come from? Well, that's trying to stay ahead of the Consumer Price Index. That's trying to stay ahead of inflation. So does a community have to build that fast? No, you don't. I mean, there's places that don't build that fast. Communities that have a lot of retail or have a lot of industrial, that they can make that up through sales tax or some other method. You don't really have to. But you do want to try to stay ahead of that Consumer Price Index. For the community Galt, we have not been. That's not to say that we can't. Back in two thousand twenty-one, we built a hundred and nineteen homes. That was a good year for the community. Last year was nine, or twenty-twenty-two, ninety-three. And we really saw a dip because of supply chain issues. Definitely labor was a problem as well as interest. With the interest rate going up, we've seen sales dip. In two thousand twenty-three, we went up to a hundred and eighty homes. The reason why you saw so many houses, new house construction taking place is those home builders, they're able to buy down interest rates. So when you were starting to see a lot of the houses and the interest rates getting up to like six percent, they were buying down the interest for two years, down to four percent. And we're seeing a lot of new home sales. And we really saw a dip of the used house turnover market. So will we see another hundred and eighty this year? I don't think so. I think it'll dip back probably closer towards like one forty. But we do have a pipeline that we are able to continue to build, if that makes sense. But from a budgetary standpoint for the city, I don't know what this, these type of numbers do for the school district. This is a mess when you're trying to provide services from a city standpoint. You can't budget on, one year you build twenty-four homes, the next is fifty-six, the next is one nineteen. You don't get consistency. So I think what we're trying to do at the city is to provide that ability for some level of consistency from a budgetary standpoint. Next slide, that's really small, sorry. It looks better on a sheet of paper. We do have a number of projects that are building, and I think in the next slide, we'll be able to start to show you what is taking place over the next three years. Definitely the biggest project we have coming online is the Liberty Ranch specific plan. That's a hundred, or fourteen hundred units. It's going to take a while to build out, but it is a large project for the city. Next slide, if I could. So again, upcoming units that you're going to see, the Liberty Ranch specific plan over on the east side of Marengo, fourteen hundred ninety-four units. We're going to start seeing some of the phases coming online towards the end of this year. A lot of house construction more in twenty twenty-five. Elliott Ranch, it's the notch property, south of Simmerhorn, north of Bosso. That's going to start building this year. You'll start to see houses in twenty twenty-five. Greenwood cottages, south of the former CVS, that area. That was just bought by Lennar. And so Lennar is a national builder. It's good to have that type of representation here in town. When you get that type of builder here, you start to get more home builders looking at this community. Summerfield is a project that's north of Twin Cities. Probably a build in twenty twenty-five. Fairway Oaks is south down near Creekside, and we expect to see houses in twenty twenty-five. And then Parlin Oaks is a project that was stalled right at Walnut and Corillian. And you're going to start to see that building this year. And that's, we've seen a lot of stalls on projects. Either projects had their financing in place and they move forward, or they didn't have their financing in place and they've really stalled out the last two years. So we're really starting to see projects that they can't wait anymore. They need to figure it out. I know this type of information just makes everyone hot. I could just see it. But we are seeing a lot more projects coming online. Again, from my perspective, I want to see stability. I want to see something that's a lot more consistent because every single time my manager comes up to me going, I need numbers so we can build our budget from. And next slide, I could. So that's Liberty Ranch, what you're going to see from a first phase. And I don't know, Lois, if you were able to pass along that aerial recently or?
Yes, yes. And the board has this in their packet as well.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
And I know you probably have other topics going on. But what you're going to see in the next year, the yellow area is currently building. It'll move on to kind of that more magenta area. So we're going to see that type of growth taking place out there in the next three years. Next slide, I know you have all these packets. Elliott Ranch, and I don't know if you want to run through these or if you have any questions on some of this growth. I think the bigger thing is just at the CAS meeting, we start going, we need to do a better job trading information back and forward so you know what's coming forward. Because I heard all the budget information, and I have the same budgetary conversations at the city in which we're trying to build a budget to make sure that we're providing services to the overall community.
Craig, I did have a question. Is there a home developer yet for Liberty Ranch?
We have had meetings with Maritage. And they're looking to take three of the villages. Could you go back a slide? So within the yellow area and kind of that magenta, there's like seven different villages there. That's like three hundred and fifty homes, and they break in the villages to like fifty homes per village. So Maritage is looking at three. They're a big national builder. And the thought is, once you bring in a big national builder, it makes it more attractive for others to start coming in. But I know of that right now. That's a home builder we've never had in town. They build a very nice house.
Okay. And I do want to thank you for always communicating with us and keeping us updated on what's going on. Craig does a great job with that.
But any questions? I know you're getting hit with a lot of numbers today.
How many actual permits have been pulled this year so far?
I think, did I say ten?
Says ten, has it changed since this?
No, no. In the parentheses, although you saw one eighty last year, I think thirty of those homes were from Dry Creek Oaks. Now, I know when it comes to the senior housing, although it's important to me because I do get some service dollars from that, that's not generating kids for you. But any other questions? And if you ever have any development questions, please feel free to reach out. Happy to tell you what I know, and it's always helpful to hear from the school district side as well. That's it. You're going to let me off the hook easy.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. All right. So our next item was just an update on our CAS meeting. We had our CAS meeting last Tuesday evening. And I want to thank President Skinner and Trustee Raboy for attending that meeting. For, I'll just do a brief summary of what the high school summarized or what they highlighted and what the city highlighted. So the high school is working on increasing security cameras. They also have a new online system called Bark that is identifying key words students might be using online that might trigger a student that needs to talk to somebody, that they might be maybe in danger, might need help. But they said the system's working very well, and they're actually reaching out to quite a few students that need to talk to somebody just by some key words that they're putting in search bars and things like that. They're busy planning for summer school. They are planning for ethnic studies curriculum. They are required to offer a course on ethnic studies by twenty-five, twenty-six. Or actually, I'm sorry, I think they're required to offer it next year, but I think it's by twenty-five, twenty-six that it will be a graduation requirement to take the course. And so they're working on that now. They are also still considering reducing the number of credits that are needed to graduate. Currently, they are requiring two hundred and eighty. They've done a study, and I guess that's pretty high compared to surrounding high schools. So they're possibly going to reduce elective credits. So they're still working on that. And then the city, Armando Solis, was And then the city, Armando Solis was representing the city as sitting, sitting manager at this time. Chris Arias is the, going to be the interim city manager. That has been announced. And he, I believe he plans on starting around February 26th. They are working on master park planning due to the additional funds the city is receiving due to Measure Q. And they are working on and have already presented at some different levels, the park plans for Simmerhorn Park, Simmerhorn Park and Liberty Ranch Park. And more information will be shared at city council meetings in March and April. But they do have some big plans on updating or adding more parks to, to the city. And our, our next meeting, I believe, is in May. I think, I think May.
Thank you. Our flyer distribution process?
Okay, yes. And so we are often contacted by community groups and asking us to share their information to our families through our system or through flyers that they might want our schools to pass out. And so we do have a board policy on that. And that's one of the policies that's updated for you tonight. But we did not have a flyer distribution process. And so we looked at what some other districts have done with this. And we are recommending the, this process for you to review tonight. We would be able to give this information to any of the community groups that contact us. And we are requiring, we would be able to send information through our email system to parents. We use Blackboard. We might also even be able to put flyers on our district webpage. We are looking at adding a community kind of network link on our, our webpage that we could add some information when we are asked to. But what we are going to require, if the board is okay with this, since our, our population does warrant this, we do need to send everything home in Spanish as well. And so we are going to, moving forward, if you're okay with this, we are going to ask the community groups that they have to provide it to us in Spanish as well. And then we would be able to send it out. And so I, I don't know if there's any other questions on this. But this is what we would be able to give members that ask us, can you distribute our information for us?
No, I think it's nice to have like a set process. And definitely in both English and Spanish. That brings us to our school calendars.
All right. Thank you. We have Fair Sight first. I will highlight on March 20th, there is a family math night. And then we will move to Lake Canyon. We have Mrs. Hayes. Thank you. Marengo Ranch, Ms. Porter. Always love pajama day. And River Oaks, Ms. Handus.
Good evening. So in March, we have similar things happening. But I wanted to highlight something that I feel is really unique in this year. And that is our mother-son event. So we do something with fathers' daughters in February. We do something with mothers and sons. This is unique with our PTA partnership. And we have more of a physical, how do you want to say? Lost on me, but a physical obstacle course and events that moms and sons can do together and challenge, physical challenges to get them out and make memories together.
Valley Oaks, Ms. Wheeler. Yes, you can. Thank you. McCaffrey Middle, Mr. Castillo.
Thank you.
Hey, I do have a couple announcements. I'll start with the consent calendar. We do have a retirement. Pamela Marjot, a current kinder teacher in our district. She is retiring in the district after 29 years of service. So congratulations to Ms. Marjot. Thank you for years of service and excited for her next journey. And then we also had a donation for Valley Oaks. Galt Pickleball Club donated pickleball equipment for physical education valued at $300. And remember, they will have pickleball courts at Valley Oaks. So they must have reached out to them and asked for a little, little donation. Yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
To approve the consent calendar, item number 232466, seconded by Casey Raboy. Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Catherine Harper.
Aye.
Wesley Kegel.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Item 232.468.
Right, thank you. So the comprehensive school safety plans are brought to the board annually for approval to be adopted by March 1st. The CDE identify, the California Department of Education identifies required components and makes recommendations on additional areas that may be concluded. Required components are assessment of safety on campus, child abuse reporting procedures, disaster procedures, suspension and expulsion procedures, procedures for safe ingress and egress, procedures for school discipline, hate crime, hate crime reporting procedures and child abuse reporting procedures. I don't know if I said them. The safety plans are reviewed and revised with input from the school site safety teams and are adopted by the school site council. Sites review a variety of data to identify areas of improvement. Such data can be suspension reports, healthy kids surveys, office reports, facilities reports. The procedures for emergency responses were developed in collaboration with the Galt Police Department and Consumer Rivers Fire Department. What is not included in these safety plans are sensitive information for obvious reasons of not disclosing tactical information. So that information is available, but it's not made public. We have transitioned to a new template this year. And I do want to give a lot of credit to the administrators that were able to pivot through this new format. This format allows our plans to be standardized across the district. And as new laws and regulations and requirements come into play, the templates can be easily adapted. So I just wanted to highlight some new items that we have incorporated. You will have seen a flow chart. And this is in alignment with CDE's requirement that school districts follow standardized emergency management system protocols when there is some type of an emergency on campus. And these are procedures and policies that fire departments put into place, police departments put into place when they're called upon to respond to an emergency situation. Also included are guidelines on providing adaptations for students with disabilities and/or employees that need accommodations. So there's templates in the plan. And each site is required to make sure that they have these updated annually to make sure that if there are employees or students that will need some modifications in the event of an emergency. Also included language in the plan to allow for public agencies such as the American Red Cross in the event that there is a community-wide a site needing for responses that has to be included. There is opioid prevention and life-saving responses in there. In addition, as part of this process, it is, it requires the sites to do an analysis or a gap analysis. Like what are some things that we could put into place to make our school culture, physical and emotional safety? And so then goals are developed. And so you will see opportunities for improvement. These are goal areas that each site has identified that they would be working on. Is there any questions?
A lot of work for you guys and adjustments, but it's very helpful.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. That's a lot of work. And I think it's really important to see this and also the relationship with the police department. I think that's super important as well as adding the opioid. So thanks for all of this information.
Yeah, I want to thank Kuljeet for really starting the, the big revisions that needed to take place with these safety plans. And so, and then our administrators worked really hard. It was, this, these are annual plans, but there was a lot more to update this year. So thank you Kuljeet for leading our, our team and great job administrators. Yeah, very important plans.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. Up a motion from Wesley Kegel to approve item number 232468, seconded by Catherine Harper. Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Casey Raboy.
Aye.
Annette Coonsy.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Have item 232.469, board consideration of approval of resolution number 11, resolution to reduce or discontinue particular kinds of services certificated.
Okay. I can go ahead and start this. I just want to say, starting this action item, the next few action items are related to reductions in staff or reduction in hours. And as you know, the state budget is facing some huge deficits. And as it was presented to you tonight, how this impacts and could impact the educational budget for, for school districts. We've been very fortunate to receive millions of, of extra dollars the last few years, whether it be in one-time funds or extremely large COLA over 8% the last couple of years. And what we are facing now is getting back down to the reality of what the state budgets kind of normally look like. You know, normally we don't have an 8% COLA and we're not receiving millions of dollars from the state or from the federal government. And so what we're faced with is right sizing. You know, we know best practices are not to use one-time funds on hiring staff, but it was almost inevitable with the needs during the pandemic. And, and, and things have changed. The needs of students have changed. And so while we are looking at some potential reductions, we've hired extra, we've hired staff and we've created new positions the last couple of years based on the, the new needs of students. And so it's, it's time to really reevaluate, you know, some, the needs and what can, what cuts can impact the, the classrooms or students, the staff, the, the least. But I do, I want to say that I know reductions are very, very difficult. The largest percentage of a district's budget are people. And that's our budget as well. We've been, you know, faced with reevaluating. And again, before we start any of these action items, we greatly, greatly value all of our employees. Everybody matters. But it is, we're, we're faced with some difficult decisions at this time. So just wanted to start that before we get into these action items. This first one is a single-subject social studies position. This was actually reduced last year due to declining enrollment at the middle school. I, I do want to understand, you know, score that this resolution is not reducing another social studies position. This is the same position. But what happened last year, the teacher that was impacted by that reduction, took a different position in our district. And so stayed teaching with us. And so we did not follow through with the final layoff that a reduction, a layoff would, a person layoff would need by May 1st because she was currently still employed with us. So what we're doing is we're bringing this back to the board to again approve this. And then we will move forward this year with the final layoff notice by May 1st, notifying that this social studies position is, is reduced. It doesn't mean this teacher is not eligible for other positions in the district that you might have the credential for.
Thank you for that clarification. It's the particular position and that it has been vacant.
Well, we, we closed it last year.
Not there. Formality on this particular.
Yes, this is, this is a formality to make sure that we've, we've crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is that we do not, due to declining and still declining enrollment at McCaffrey, we do not need the single-subject social studies. I believe it's six, six periods. And so that, it's still the case that we don't need, that we do not need to add that position.
We do have a public comment for this agenda item. Veronica Kaufman.
Good evening. This actually has to do with the next three agenda items. I am urging the board to vote no on agenda item 232.469, 232.470 and 232.471. At this point in time, I'm sure there's going to be many more comments related to this. I'm requesting the salary information for the Director of Educational Services, Director of Curriculum and the Superintendent be made public. At the time of Ms. Yount's hiring, I believe the total compensation package was stated to be over $200,000 annually. We should not be cutting positions that directly support students. If we have a budget shortfall, perhaps it should come from the salaries of the directors and ultimately the superintendent. When we are sending two-thirds of our students to high school below grade level in math and ELA, we should not be cutting instructional assistants, librarians or social studies teachers. If anything, we need to have additional supports for our current teachers who I will say go above and beyond for, for our students. And that the district should not continue to let our students down. So again, I urge you to vote no on the next three agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, can I get a motion to approve item 232?
I'll make the motion to approve 232469.
I'll second.
Thank you. Up a motion from Annette Coonsy to approve item number 232469, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Casey Raboy.
Aye.
Catherine Harper.
Aye.
Wesley Kegel.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Item 232.470, board consideration of approval. Item two, three, two, point four, seven, zero, board consideration of approval. Sorry, board consideration of approval of resolution number 12, resolution to reduce particular kinds of services and abolish classified positions due to lack of work or lack of funds.
Okay, you want me to do a summary first or do you want a public comment or I? Oh, sure. Okay. Yes, absolutely. So these are some classified positions that we are considering for reducing. Most of these positions are currently vacant. It's identified for you both in the resolution and in the summary page which positions are vacant. Some have been vacant for quite a while. Some have just become vacant the last couple of months and we have decided not to repost at this time pending this agenda item. There are eight positions that are not vacant. That would be, that would impact current staff that are in those positions. And so you can see which ones, those are. The food and nutrition cashier, that position, we do not have a person, a staff member in that position right now, but it will not be, that position will be reduced, but we are adding another position in food and nutrition. So we no longer have the job description, food and nutrition cashier. What we've done is moved to a food and nutrition assistant one. So that position we do need, it will be posted and hired. So it's kind of just a shift in a position that we do, we are recommending to the board. We have a bilingual community outreach assistant. There's two positions. One is vacant. We are recommending that position be closed. There's some instructional assistants and there's a bilingual instructional assistant, a preschool instructional assistant. Some of these positions probably will come back. Unfortunately, we are tied to the March 15th deadline that we have to notify employees, worst-case scenario. Usually every year at this time, the board is looking, approves reduction of some instructional assistants, especially in special education. And it's just because at this early in the game, we don't know the need, student need. We don't know how many students are going to be in classes for special education. And so in many cases, we end up bringing these positions back. One of the IA positions at six hours, you know, this is a position that is serving the students in the home learning program. Last year we laid this off as well and we ended up bringing it back. We bring it back if the student enrollment in that program justifies the need for, for extra support. So I would anticipate that some of these positions will come back. But again, it's March 15th. If we don't notify employees now, then we can't reduce if needed.
Hi, I am Maria Bernal. I am at River Oaks. I was an IA for about eight years and then I got a position for sped because my kid that I worked with graduated and that's what you want to see. I have worked alongside these IA ladies and bilingual IA ladies and I was trained by a lot of them. A lot of the times you have us moved from one's IA position to another or sped IA or different categories, but you guys classify us under one certain category. You want to put us under a big umbrella. And because I am under the sped IA now position, I could tell you that it's different. It is completely from night and day. You throw us in there with no training. You guys say you guys are going to give us training and to this day I still have not gotten any kind of training. So I would like you guys, if we are going to be trained, that you guys give us a salary for a trained position. If I'm having to train other people or people or the other IAs are treating, or sorry, or the bilingual IAs are training me to do my job, are you going to give us a salary for a trainer? And you guys have been saying that we have no money and we hear that every year. So then how are you guys getting paid? And then the guy that said that we're bringing all these houses, I can't afford those houses because I can't afford to live off what you guys pay me. So I would like you guys to really think about how, if you guys want GALT to be productive and you want to bring housing and you want to keep us here, then pay us. Pay us to be able to rent an apartment that costs a thousand, six hundred for a one-bedroom apartment or pay us over six thousand to eight thousand so we can pay rent for one month for a regular house to keep us here in GALT. Thank you.
Have another public comment. Sarah Delgado?
Thank you for allowing me to be here. I do understand that you guys are on a budget trying to do it within a deadline here. But like, like you said, and like everybody said, these are people. They do need to have a, you know, be able to provide for their families. Some of them actually, this is their, their income. They don't have other people to rely on to bring in the money. So when you are thinking about the budget, try to find another way to reduce the hours. Certain positions, IAs are always needed. Personally, from Lake Canyon point of view, we absolutely need our BFLC tech. I've sent all of you an email and the position is just, really can't reduce the hours. I've witnessed over the nine years, the positions change, but the hours are needed for the amount of work that comes through. It's more than just a librarian, more than just the Chromebook. It's a constant throw, constant stream of working with the kids, reading. She does more than just, you know, what, what you guys see as her title. You have to be in there seeing not just her, but all of the, all the BFLC texts. I would really, really, really hate to see, you know, changes made to certain positions because they are people and they do impact all of our, all of our kids. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do ask questions about the bilingual positions. Now, are these going to be based on enrollment? Or is there a chance that enrollment comes back, these positions we backfilled?
I, I can tell you that the bilingual community outreach assistant, that is not based on student enrollment. Those positions have been grant-funded and the grant has, has sunset. Mainly the grant was the Central Valley JBMF grant. And so this was our last year of those grant funds. And then the instructional assistant bilingual, those are two positions that are vacant. Those aren't based, our, our regular ed instructional assistants bilingual and instructional assistants, regular education are not based on student enrollment. It's really based on funding and it's based on site need. So principals get to decide a lot of that too. We allocate certain funds to our sites and then they have some discretion on how they use their funds. But what has happened is we've been significantly reduced in Title I funding as well. And so what we have been using for salary or for budget purposes to fund our instructional assistants has been Title I and that has dropped drastically. And so we are looking at reducing, we're very, very fortunate to have the level of instructional assistance that we have, especially to support interventions and reading and primary. But we are, we are looking at, at needing to reduce and it's, it's really based on funding.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Catherine Harper to approve item number two, three, two, four, seven, zero, seconded by Casey Raboy. Tracy Skinner? Annette Coonsey?
Aye.
Wesley Kegel?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Ask a question. I know it's a little late. So all those elimination, all those positions, how, how much money does that equal?
Yes, I have that for you. So for the, for the positions that are not vacant, the ones that are currently still in our budget, that is 116,607. So for those, the eight positions that currently have staff in those positions. A lot of the other, some, a lot of the vacant positions have already been taken out of our budget. They've been vacant for a while. Some ha, a few, a couple of them haven't, but it is, it's a little over a hundred thousand dollars.
I have a related question, but I think it'll be handled under the next topic better.
Okay.
We'll move on to two, three, two, point four, seven, one, board consideration of approval of resolution number 13, resolution to reduce particular kinds of services due to lack of work or lack of funds classified.
All right, thank you. So within the last couple of years, due to increased funding, the district created a new eight-hour bilingual office assistant position. This was a brand-new position that we, we created for the district office a couple of years ago. We are recommending reducing the hours from eight to four. Most of our bilingual office assistants in the district do work part-time at 3.92 hours. And so we are recommending to reduce this by four hours. It's a, it is a 12-month position. So the work year is longer than our other bilingual office assistants as well. For the Bright Future Learning Technicians, these are our librarians. We have six in the district. I want to start by saying thankfully we are not talking about closing our libraries like we had to do during the last recession and hopefully we'll never get that, to that point again. We definitely do not want to close our libraries. Our BFLC, BFLC technicians were increased to eight hours with Race to the Top Grant. When that took place, prior to that grant, our bilingual, or sorry, our technicians were six or seven hours. They did move to eight hours to fulfill the grant. And that was really to create hubs, fan for families, increase technology, clubs after school. And it was before we had, you know, the, the expanded learning programs, the after-school programs now that we have at all of our school sites. And I do want to say that we've hired a lot of classified staff, extra staff or additional staff, I should say, and created job descriptions with the expanded learning funds. And so we've hired multiple instructional assistants at six hours for the sites. We've hired coordinators. So we have been able to create some positions as well. Again, we are looking at reducing about a million dollars in our budget and we're, we're doing this in a variety of ways. We are recommending reducing the technicians from eight hours to six hours. It would be a two-hour decrease. If the board were to prove, approve this, next steps would be to negotiate with CSCA or Classified Union on the effects, what this would look like. For example, what the new start and end time would be at six hours, possibly reduction of task, updating maybe job descriptions, looking at services during the, the day when students are on campus, looking at how much prep time we should build into schedules. You know, looking at do we need 20-minute slots, 30-minute slots for, for grade levels? Just really looking at the schedules, but that we have contract language with our classified union that we would bargain that effect. This impact, this reduction, if approved, would not take place until next school year, August of 24, 25. And so we do have time to, to negotiate and work out the effects. The cost for these reductions for the bilingual office assistant and for the BFLC techs is almost a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. General fund.
Ms. Delgado, would you like your, you covered it. Yeah, I just wanted, yeah, just wanted to make sure I didn't take your time from you. Question on the Race to the Top Grant. When did that expand?
Was it 2016? I think it was 2016.
About 10 years ago.
Yeah, and we have had to cut back on quite a few different positions since Race to the Top Funds. It's been a little bit each year. And then we were considering taking some of these actions, really considering some of these actions to take to the board right before the pandemic. Because if you remember before the pandemic, our reserve was around three percent bordering. You know, we were getting down there and so we were starting to think about, you know, what else did we bring on? What did we add with Race to the Top that we need to consider reducing? And then we received a lot of money. And so, you know, we bought things, we hired staff, we've kept ours, you know, the way they were. But again, we're, we're back to right sizing what a, a normal budget looks like. Or even a deficit budget, not even a normal budget. We went from high and now we're going, going low.
I think when you described the Race to the Top Grant and what it wanted to achieve with the Bright Future, Bright Future Learning Centers. My children attend Lake Canyon and I think that's exactly what it has accomplished there. And so I know it is, you know, it's hard to think of adjusting that or dialing it back. And you know, Ms. Becca has been amazing and she definitely has hit all those, you know, wants for what Race to the Top
Yeah.
Grant wanted to do. And I think all the parents want to see that continue. And you know, hopefully we can try to adjust, you know, with the reduction in hours. I mean, I think unfortunately, the budget's just not looking good and we're going to have to make tough decisions. It's hard to be thinking that way and unfortunately I think this is kind of just the start.
And we have to rethink things with the funds we have. For example, we have expanded learning funds. There's a lot of extra money there right now. Although I do feel, I think it will be reduced some in May. But we, we, I don't think it will be reduced all the way. And so, you know, if this is a priority for the district, priority for the school sites, that we have clubs after school, how do we incorporate that into expanded learning using those funds? You know, I think we're going to wait to see what May looks like for expanded learning funds, but maybe we create a new job description and, and, and hire staff with, specifically with those funds to continue to support after-school services. So we just, we have to get creative and we have to look at the funding that we do have and how we can, how we can spend those funds. But these positions are currently general fund.
The, if they're at eight hours right now, they have benefits?
Yes.
So where do those benefits get cut?
It would be reduced by the percentage. So it's, I'll let Alejandro speak to that, but it would be reduced, yeah.
All right, guys. It would be reduced based on the hours. So they do qualify for benefits still, but it's based on the amount of hours. So a full-time eight-hour would get the full 10,800. And, and then that's divided by how many in those hours. So it'll be just adjusted to half of what we would pay.
The bilingual office assistant going from eight hours to four hours. So her benefit package right now is like 10,000?
10,800 and then it would be just half of that.
It's going to get cut to 5,000.
Yeah, and then they would have to pay the difference, correct?
I had an observation and a question. So first, I just want to say thank you to all the people that reached out to us. It helps to have that perspective, and also the people who spoke tonight. I know it can be very nerve-wracking to be up there, so thank you. So I wanted to say that the libraries, I can agree, have had four children go through Gaunt schools, and they have been tremendous library users, so I'm super happy to hear that they're not, you know, going away. I do understand our budget situation. I also understand, based on kind of what I'm hearing from some of the different comments, is perhaps there is a way, and it sounds like maybe this is a conversation that's going to be coming up, you know, is there a way to relieve some of those tasks that are done? Or possibly, you know, sometimes you think you're doing something, and, and then you stop doing it, and you don't realize that perhaps maybe it's not as impactful, but it's very scary to make that change. So like a workload analysis of the different tasks that are done, and are there different strategies and opportunities there? One of the themes was Chromebooks, you know, is there possible solutions to explore there that can help with that? So I think just having that more holistic conversation about the workloads and the tasks may be something, because I think probably what people are concerned about is losing those key services that are super important to them. And it sounds like the after-school programs perhaps are one very important one, and then this other, you know, some of these other things, what's very most important that we can still maintain? And, and yet maybe eliminate other things that perhaps we on first blush think are important, but then when we dive a little deeper, realize that maybe it's not as consequential if those tasks go away, and that saves some time. So I just wanted to make that one comment, and then also this is more a question of me learning, because I'm still learning the process, but and, and let me know if there's anything that you can't share because of the bargaining process. But how does some of these reductions relate to some of like the budgeting process, I mean, the bargaining process? Like, for example, is, is it a, you know, if we do this, then, you know, if we have higher salaries, then there's cons- for everybody, there's certain consequences over here. Is it like, do they relate to each other? Or is it just two completely independent conversations? Does that make sense, that question?
They're, they're not independent conversations. I mean, we have been very open, and Alejandro's used the word transparent. We've been very open and transparent with our bargaining groups the last few months and at the bargaining table that while, yes, we're giving salary raises to all employees, or possibly all employees, it still needs to come to the board. While we have an obligation as a district to make sure we're attracting and retaining the highest-quality staff members we can, sometimes there comes a price with that, too, that there's reductions. And so unfortunately, you know, it's, it's for, for both groups. It's usually the least senior in the groups that are affected by this, and it is unfortunate, but it is a reality when, yeah, if, if we didn't give raises, could we, would we not be looking at a million dollars in cuts? Absolutely. We would not be having this conversation. That is the reality. But all districts are facing this. They are still giving compensation, and they're looking at reductions as well. And we knew this was, you know, we knew this was coming when you receive tons of money, whether it's grants, whether it's state, federal, whatever it might be. When you get the extra money, you have to spend it. And we received so much extra money the last few years, it was hard to spend. We were hiring staff, and they gave us timelines. You know, you have to spend this money by June thirtieth of this year. So, yeah, I mean, we were hiring staff, knowing we were going to have to reduce. And it's unfortunate, but that's, that's the way our system is set up. And yeah, you know, but yeah, no, if, if we didn't give compensation, we, we wouldn't be looking at a million dollars.
So if something happens with the budget, how do you decide, and say we end up with more money than we're predicting we're going to be cutting? How do you decide who gets to come back?
So employees, there's a, a layoff list, there's a rehire list, there's certain, a thirty-nine month, there's all different months of rehire list. And so when we bring these positions back, if we can bring these positions back, it goes in order of where you're at on the rehire list. And so, again, I do anticipate quite a few of these classified positions probably coming back, especially in the area of special education. But yes, you are on a rehire list, depending on how long you've been with the, depending on how many hours in full-time, it's different. But we, we keep a rehire list. And so before we can go out and hire anyone else, we have to offer the position on the list based on seniority.
And is that an item you report back to us? Like, when you bring those positions back, is that something you bring back to us? Or can you, I guess?
Yeah, we can definitely do that. Yes. Yeah, we definitely can do that.
I think it's obviously hard. We, we talk about compensation, like, we all agree our staff needs to be paid more money. People, you know, whether it's classified or certificated, I think we can all agree, don't get paid enough for the jobs that they do. But at the same time, we have to try to figure out how we can maintain.
Yeah.
I get a motion to approve item two, three, two point four, seven, one. I'll make the motion to approve two, three, two, four, four, seven, one.
All second.
Thank you. Have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number two, three, two, four, seven, one, seconded by Casey Raboy. Catherine Harper?
Aye.
Annette Kuntzey?
Aye.
Wesley Cagle?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
I think we're going to be going for a while tonight. Do we want to take a quick break?
I'm, I'm okay right now.
Let me know if you're, if you're not. Okay, we'll move on to two, three, two point four, seven, two then. Board consideration of approval of resolution number fifteen, or sorry, fourteen, resolution to eliminate or reduce the number of child development permit employees due to lack of work or lack of funds.
Okay, these are our preschool teachers. We currently have five preschool teachers at Fair Sight. Our state preschool funding is enough for four preschool teachers. And so the last couple of years, we've been able to have a fifth position due to, again, extra funding, one-time funding, some general funds, some grant funding, but now that we are getting back to only having what state preschool gives us, we are recommending that we go back to four preschool classes instead of five. And so this resolution does impact two teachers, one that the class is closed, and then there, the other is because of bumping rights, somebody moving in positions, and so that's, that's why there's two, but there's really only one class that is being closed at the preschool.
So then that would mean that you would just not have, you would have less enrollment then, is that versus putting more kids into the classes you would have?
Oh, yes, yes. It would be less enrollment, and we're not funded on ADA for preschool. We're given a set amount, no matter how many students we enroll. And so we would just, once we get to our max, following contract language, or not even contract language, there's preschool guidelines, yeah. And, and so we would just, we would not exceed that. We just, we'd stop the enrollment for preschool.
And this next year, the TK start date changes, so hopefully we'll get more that would have been in preschool.
Yes, yes. Yep.
Anybody else? I get a motion to approve item two, three, two point four, seven, two?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
All second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a motion from Wesley Cagle to approve item number two, three, two, four, seven, two, seconded by Annette Kuntzey. Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Casey Raboy?
Aye.
Catherine Harper?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Item two, three, two point four, seven, three. For consideration of approval of the twenty thirteen, twenty-four Art and Music Institute's annual report.
Okay, so the Arts and Music Prop twenty-eight, what we referred is, and on November eighth, twenty twenty-two, the voters approved Proposition twenty-eight, which is one percent of our Prop ninety-eight funds, that's the money how we're funded, and general ed has to be spent for arts and musics and other related categories under that. So the district is required to spend of that budget eighty percent on salaries, and then twenty percent on other, like, training supplies and materials or, or other partnerships, educational partnerships. We're required to bring this plan annually to the board, and this is what it looks like. And in this plan, we have to include, according to CDE, the number of full-time equivalent teachers, classified personnel, and teaching aides under this grant, the number of pupils being served, and the number of school sites providing the arts and music funds. So this plan, I broke it down exactly how CDU wanted it. We are currently funding an art teacher at McCaffrey under this, this allocation. About, we serve about thirty-four hundred students based on the December enrollment period, and the rest of it is broken down by site. Those, that allocation by site, eighty percent must be spent on salaries, and the twenty percent of each site has to be spent on the training supplies and other services. We did posts for a, a, a elementary art teacher, and it's on Edjoin. We thought it would be, we could share it, and that way we could use multiple, the salary portion, that eighty percent portion, to be able to fund it. I know we had it open previously, we couldn't fill it. It's something that California, overall, everybody's struggling to fill these positions. The twenty percent I provided to the administrator, to the adminis- site administrators of their balances of what they, they could use it for and examples. I know we currently have been expending it on a SGOE contract for the arts, ensure arts for any given child, some band supplies, and a music conference that's coming up, or came up in February, I think. And then the principals are planning of how they, they're planning of how they're going to spend their allocated portion. And we will provide this plan once a year, and, and this is ongoing funds that, of the Prop ninety-eight, however funded, that they'll be getting, and then they have up to three years to spend the funds from this year. So, so we get, we got the five forty-five, we have until three years from this fiscal year to spend it, and we get another allocation for the next year. So, and it's very strict on what it can be spent for. I can't use it for raises, I can't use it to fund other positions. It has a specific category, and then I have to report out. And this will be audited in our annual audit, so I have to show that it's related under the ed code and CDE requirements.
So this is an example when there's different buckets of funds. I mean, this actually allows us to hire another teacher or even classified staff. And so we do have a current posting to try to find a art teacher to support the elementary schools. We will see if we're successful. But it's also an area that could be reduced, so we'll, we'll wait to see what they do.
It's, and another thing that I want, it's very restricted, and everybody's pushing feedback, the districts are pushing feedback to the state, saying can we spend, have more flexibility because of that eighty percent that we can't touch? We're hoping to see waivers coming, hopefully. It still has to be related to arts and music, but because of that restriction, it's limiting on many districts in California.
And then, if I remember correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, originally, like, there was another grant that was a little more flexible, and we were going to use it for the math curriculum. But now that it's more restricted, now that math curriculum needs to come out of general fund, is that correct? Or is that incorrect?
We're using part of the funding for the, that's the block grant. So the block grant has that discretionary use of how we could use it. We're using a portion of it because it did get decreased, and then we're using general fund to fund the rest of the math adoption together.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, we are keeping at this time, unless something drastically changes in May, at this time, the math adoption is still in the budget.
Yes, it is frustrating when I understand why, and for good reason, but yes.
One of the examples of, you know, while they're waiting and working on trailer bill language is the lobbyists, what they're trying to do with pots of money like this. Right now, the language says we can't supplant. But if they gave us some flexibility, even say twenty percent of this, these funds could be supplanted. We could free up general fund by paying, we have music teachers currently. We could, those are out of general fund. If they would let us supplant even a little bit, we could free up some general fund for other areas and pay twenty percent of their salary using these funds. And so the lobbyists are currently trying to get the governor to make some exceptions, especially with what we're facing right now. So we'll see what happens.
Oh, I mean, what can, you know, the public, or the parents, or the school sites do to kind of have their voice heard by the lobbyists, or, you know?
Yeah, talk to your legislators, and that's really good at this. And then how do you make your voice heard?
Yeah, I mean, I think, and, and I actually, I'm glad you brought that up, because and once something is chapered into law, it's really hard to make changes. So the opportunity to make any changes, to have any influence, is before it's actually in, in law. So once you track those bills, listen to the hearings, contact your legislators, you can even go down and, you know, test, you know, provide your feedback and opposition in person at, at the Capitol. And so definitely take those chances as they come. I mean, there's some, there's some good stuff, and there's some stuff that is almost, you know, the sky must always be purple. So I would definitely pay attention to a lot of those things that come through and, and let your voice be heard. It's really easy to contact your legislator, legislators, and yeah, if you need any input, feel free to reach out to me. It's, it's my bailiwick, is that the right word?
Item two, three, two point four, seven, three.
I'll make the motion to approve two, three, two point four, seven, three.
And I'll second.
Thank you. Have a motion from Catherine Harper to approve item number two, three, two, four, seven, three, seconded by Annette Kuntzey. Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Casey Raboy?
Aye.
Wesley Cagle?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Item two, three, two point four, seven, four, board consideration of the twenty-four ballot for California School Board Association Delegate Assembly.
All right, this is the annual election for CSBA Delegate Assembly. There's two candidates on the ballot. The board also has the opportunity to write in a candidate. And so there's a bio provided on both of these candidates, a board trustee from Robla School District and a trustee from Twin Rivers. So sometimes the board does not make a, an action on this. If, if you, you know anything about either one of these trustees, or if you have somebody that you would like to write in.
It says vote for two, and there's two of them.
Yes.
I'll, I'll make the motion to vote for the two.
Okay.
No. They want to volunteer their time.
I don't know that I know enough to feel like I can vote, so I'll, I don't know, abstain, or what do I do?
Do you just go down like a roll call, or how do you?
Do you agree? I mean,
I'm good with it. I mean, I think they'll probably just get it by default, but I'm good abstaining.
Okay, so then there'd be no action on this?
Okay. So the motion dies.
Okay.
Right, the motion dies.
Then two, three, two point four, seven, five. Good?
Oh, yes.
Okay, board consideration of approval of the piggyback on the Santa Cruz City Schools contract with American Modular Systems and two modular and/or prefabricated structures, portable classrooms. and two modular and or refabricated structures, portable classrooms at Greer.
Okay, so last month, the board approved the Architectural Services, Services Agreement to replace two portables at Greer Elementary. Um, so now we are asking for approval for American Modular Systems for two new portables. We would use expanded learning funds for this. Um, these portables are currently used for expanded learning. It would continue to be used for expanded learning. Um, the contract is uh provided for you. We did not have to go out to com- competitively bid this project because it is a piggyback contract. And so what that means is if another district has already gone through the competitive bidding process, we can piggyback on their contract. And so I've provided that documentation. We're piggybacking on um Santa Cruz City School District. It was board approved May tenth, twenty twenty three. So we're guaranteed a, a good price and don't have to go out to competitive bid. It saves us time and money on the bidding process. And so um, delivery of these portables, they would, if board approves, um, they would start manufacturing them. They probably will be done um possibly in the shop or in the fabrication end of this tw- year, twenty twenty four, probably not delivered until January, February of twenty twenty five. Then you have to start your site work. And so probably not moving into these portables until spring, maybe summer, depending on, you know, how we, you know, soon we can get a general contractor to do the site work.
I got a question. Did you need to contact Santa Cruz to let them know you're piggybacking off their bid?
No, no, the um, the contractor takes care of all of that because it's to their benefit too. When they get a district to, you know, do this piggyback contract, what the, what American Modular System, what they provided for us was the backup, the board minutes and the um, the bidding um package that was put out there. And so that's all we have to provide to show that they did go through the process.
I know we've done this before, but uh
Yeah. Yeah, I think this is only the second time that we've done this. Now that we've just, you know, been doing more facility upgrades, we're becoming a little more savvy on con- contracts and
The portables that we're, will, will we be replacing? How old are the portables that are there right now?
Oh, gosh, they are probably uh thirty, forty, I mean
Oh, wow.
They're Yeah, they're, they're very old. They're so old.
Hand-me-downs.
Yeah. Yeah, they're so old that we knew as soon as we had some funding, we would replace them. We no, did no modernization to them when we did the Greer modernization. And we didn't even put sinks in them back two summers ago when we put sinks in all the portables at Greer. We haven't touched these really, knowing that we needed to get rid of them. Yeah.
Fifty years out of the
Yeah, yeah. They are staying, and we are using them. We're using them, yeah. Yes, they do.
I'll make the motion to approve
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve, I have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number two, three, two, four, seven, five, seconded by Casey Raboy. Catherine Harper.
Aye.
Annette Coonsey.
Aye.
Wesley Kegel.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Item two, three, two point four seven six, for consideration of approval to change the June, June twenty four regular floor meeting from June nineteenth at the Gulf City Hall Chamber to June eighteenth at the Gulf Joint Union Elementary School District Office um due to the June
Yep, that's it.
I get a motion to approve two, three, two point four seven
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Wes.
I'll second.
Thank you. Have a motion from Wesley Kegel to approve item number two, three, two, four, seven, six, seconded by Catherine Harper. Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Casey Raboy.
Aye.
Annette Coonsey.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Two, three, two point four seven seven.
So last month, this was a first reading and Cabinet gave a summary of changes to these board policies or regulations and exhibits. There were no recommendations to make any changes. And so this is an action item to, to motion to approve the changes.
With that, I'll make the motion to approve two, three, two point four seven seven.
I'll second.
Thank you. Have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number two, three, two, four, seven, seven, seconded by Annette Coonsey. Casey Raboy.
Aye.
Catherine Harper.
Aye.
Wesley Kegel.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Why do we have any um public comments for? Thank you.
Unfortunately, I'm back here again this evening. Um, this is regarding the menstrual products discussion earlier. You stated, you meaning the board, stated that they could be removed from some of the bathrooms because it says men in the language, however, also says women and not girls. You are playing a game of semantics. So let's call a spade a spade. This is not about pads, tampons, or bathrooms anymore than it was about bathrooms during Jim Crow. This is anti-trans and anti-LGBTQ. It's bigotry and it's hatred, and kids are being harmed. So to the teachers and admin on the campuses that are helping and supporting these students, I wanna say thank you. Specifically, I wanna say thank you to some of the staff at Lake Canyon, as well as the middle school, McCaffrey. We're literally helping to save some of these children's lives. To the LGBTQ students and families, I want you to know that you are valuable, you are worthy, and you are deserving a true equity. And you are deserving of better board numbers than what we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Have any pending items besides the, I know we have that acceleration blocks and the SRO report that possibly be next time?
Um, the acceleration blocks will definitely be next time along with map data for March. Um, the SRO, we have a, we already have a very tight, or a very full, I should say, um, agenda for March. And so I will probably see if the SRO is available in April. So we have the budget. We've got quite a few other items that will be presented in next meeting and map data. So.
Um, I don't know if it's a report item or something, maybe I just may contact you personally. But uh, I'd like to, uh, the lady that talked about the training for the bilingual is um
Oh, yes, Maria Bernal.
Yeah. Um, I would because she brought up, to me, uh, it's a subject that uh, that, that needs to be brought up, I think. If, if you get to a position, you're supposed to get training, and she's stating she didn't get training, how can we, you know what I'm saying, how's, how can we, I don't say verify it, but
Right. I can, I, I definitely have information that I could share with the board on that. Okay.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.